So, Mr. Wayne talked to some students that he coaches with, right? And so, I got booed when I brought my daughter up, but she had, we've had this conversation. We talk about this, but her, you know, what makes this a different conversation is, well, Mom, how is it that folks that are against this can come and say all of these very visual, porn-like things? And, you know, so it's just, it's such an awkward conversation to have, but I don't feel like some of that conversation is for us. We are here to adopt our standards so that staff can bring the curriculum. And so, I just wanted to kind of get that point of clarification, is that regardless of what we do, we're not going to make everyone happy. There's also been other questions in the media, in the public. We have very pro and against LGBT. But also, when I go to church, I see everyone. And so, our role here is to do what's best for everyone and make sure that those students don't have that great, you know, those great parents that are having that conversation. I'd like to think that I'm that great parent because I have that conversation. I had that conversation as a single mother with my two sons, which was very uncomfortable. And we sat back to back and we're like, okay, this is going to be a tough conversation, but we have to have this conversation. But what about those parents that don't have someone that are courageous enough to talk to their young man that they have at home and they don't have the guidance? So, I just, I want us to make sure that we're talking about, you know, the standards and what's best for kids. And some of this conversation will come back for curriculum, because that's, the devil is in the details in the curriculum. But there's so much valid point coming from both sides of the table, but I would like to hear more of those conversations that we're having with constituents and specifically from our students, because this is where this is most affected, is by our students. And we tend to forget that this is the world that they live in. We didn't come up with social media. Someone during public comment was talking about they have access to the world in their pocket. And the stuff that they see, that I've seen, and it's like, whoa, that's too much. And again, I'll go back to that first grader who's got an iPhone, that how many parents truly are watching their internet and putting those parental controls on it? And so, I just want to share that conversation to the table for not just our board, for our community, to start engaging in, once we get past standards. And once we bring back to the community, this is some curriculum that we're talking about. But I would also hate for us to get so far in the curriculum detail at the standards level, that we can't have that thorough conversation. Because the reality is, is that I may see the world from my own religious and cultural background, but Lacey has a very different view, and Luann does, and Mrs. Fay. I mean, we all have something different to add to the conversation, but I think we're trying to do what's best for kids. And so, I just wanted to put it out there, as we're talking, as we're moving forward, and to make sure that some of the conversation about standards doesn't get too sticky in the curriculum detail.
And I guess I would just add that I think, I think that's a very valid point to bring up. But again, I think that's part of the curriculum piece. And I think when we get, I mean, we've talked about when we get to the curriculum piece, that that will be done at sites, giving parents the opportunity to sit at round tables and cover information. And that may be very well, a good conversation to have at that curriculum piece. And it may also be a good conversation as this gets implemented, to get feedback forms and to really find out. Because sometimes we don't know until we ask. Sometimes we say, well, we didn't hear anything, but maybe there's information out there. So, Mr. Wayne?
I wasn't trying to have a detailed conversation. I just asked a simple question of, is, does the research say that it's better to teach this in gender-specific classes? And I gotta believe that with all the research out here that everybody keeps throwing around, that somewhere it says that whether it's not, whether it is.
I can answer that more specifically, if that could help. There's an abundance of gender research predominantly done by the Sadcourers, if they're from American University. And the benefit of separate gender classes is most markedly noted in science and math, and it's particularly helpful for girls. There is no evidence that I could find, having done gender studies as a part of what I taught at the university several years ago, of other courses being highlighted, having a positive impact, except for those areas, STEM areas, and in particular for girls. So, in terms of academic achievement, so I can give you that piece of data. There was not health or human growth and development listed as being beneficial as single gender. You should know that some PE teachers throughout the United States still have single gender PE classes. So, that does exist. We did not see other school districts at secondary having single or same-gender health classes. So, if that information is helpful.
Thank you.
Ms. America?
You're fine. I just wanted to echo, I really do think this is something we could handle when we're looking at curriculum. And also, it's something, I understand the point you're raising, Mr. Wayne. And it's something that I, I really feel like our teachers could be the people who make a judgment on that as well. And if our teachers think, no, this is not the first thing they're covering in the course. They're covering a lot of things about decision-making, bullying, that they should be in the same class together to talk about those things. When they get to that point in the course where we're starting to talk about puberty changes, talk about reproduction, I trust our teachers to be able to decide, yes, this class can handle being together, or, you know, I don't think this class is really emotionally mature enough to handle this conversation together, and then to work together to figure out a plan where they could separate them if they need to. I remember that happening in my middle school class, where there were a couple of days where we did get separated into boys and girls, because they didn't, the teacher didn't feel we were ready to discuss some of the topics together. So, we got separated, did those topics, came back for the end.
Thank you, Ms. America. Let's see, are there any other comments? I think we had a motion for Mr. Scanlon and a second from Mrs. Fay, somewhere in the whole conversation. So, I think we're ready for roll call, Mr. Wayne.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne. Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Nai.
The motion carries. With that, we're going to move on to 10th grade, and I think we probably saw maybe the most changes here from the workshop. So, I will turn it over to Dr. Kerberg to go through those.
I'd like to go ahead and turn your attention, and if I could make sure someone moves this forward, maybe Jennifer, I can ask you to flip that forward for me. We're on page 16, and we're at 10th grade, and so you're looking at that particular page. I would like to note that the social media information was there previously, but that does match what the board had asked on a previous occasion to make sure it was at every grade level, but it was there the last time you looked at it. So, that's not a change, just a recognition, that that was something you had talked about at the last meeting. I would like to mention that we added at the bottom of that section on social media, per request, when it was in the Code of Conduct, to note that. And you can see that at the bottom of the section on Media Impact, page 16, and that is number F. We do reference the Omaha Public Schools Student Code of Conduct, and that harassment is a violation of that. So, that was added to existing content. And then, as we go to page 17, the section that is new there is E, the others you saw previously. And there was the request to put in anything in connection with the Student Code of Conduct. And of course, sexual assault is listed as a violation of the Code of Conduct. We also reference the statutory numbers in connection with that particular topic. And that's page 17, Section 7, number E, on sexual assault. And then, as we go to page 18, there is nothing new there, except the discussion earlier to insert this statement at 10th grade. We think it fits in as a new P, and that would again be under seven, sexual abuse topic. And the P would be, decisions regarding sexual activity should be made if both partners are sober, and not under the influence of drugs or alcohol. So, we see that as a place to insert that same statement that you had us add to other grade levels. And then, as we go on, there's no changes on pages 19. We did add at the bottom of bullying, which is the top of the page, that's also a violation of the Omaha Public Schools Student Code of Conduct, pages eight and nine. And then, we added under 10, alcohol and other drug use and abuse, under A. The fact that tobacco or chemical nicotine use or distribution while in the school building or grounds is a violation of the Omaha Public Schools Student Code of Conduct, pages six and seven, as well as B, in reference to the Student Code of Conduct, pages eight and nine, for the use and possession of drugs, alcoholic beverages, controlled or imitation controlled substances, or other mood-altering chemicals, and that's a violation of our Code of Conduct. So, the three sections changed on page 19 are again, adding the Code of Conduct language to bullying, to abuse of drugs, alcohol, and then tobacco. 20, no changes on that page. Again, that's 10th grade, and that's topics 11, 12, and 13. And then, on page 21, no changes on 14. And on 15, under reproductive preventative options. F, G, and H are inserted after the board workshop discussion. F, to ensure the prevention of pregnancy, after unprotected vaginal intercourse, emergency contraception could be taken, period. It is available over the counter from a pharmacist or healthcare provider, and has no age restrictions for purchasing or use, period. And then, G, emergency contraception is not recommended as a primary method of birth control, period. And H, when faced with unintended pregnancy, comma, student should speak with their parents, caregivers, and partner. Together, they should consider their options and the impact it will have on their lives. Those choices could include carrying the baby to term with one or more partner's parenting, creating an adoption plan, or terminating the pregnancy. And so, those were the additions on page 21, again, to topic 15, reproductive prevention options, listed as F, G, and H. Page 22, no changes from what you saw previously. And then, page 23, that legal section has been added, same as the other legal sections for the other grade levels, which is number 19. And I think you can see A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I. And again, F, G, and H were put in at two other grade levels as well, per your request. And I could read page 19 if you'd like me to, have it read in, otherwise, it's in front of you.
Why don't we go ahead and do that, just because we have so many members of the audience who are here, and it wasn't a part of, what was there at the workshop?
Topic 19, standard is to explain the current status of Nebraska law. These content topics will be merged in where appropriate into the previous content standards. It starts off with A, it is illegal in Nebraska to have sex with someone if there is not consent. B, consent is the freely given permission to engage in physical contact without the presence of coercion or threat. Both partners must verbally give and obtain consent to engage in physical contact. C, it is illegal in Nebraska for anyone under the age of 16 to have sex with someone 19 or older. D, sexual assault is illegal. E, sexual abuse is illegal. F, it is illegal for anyone under the age of 21 to possess or consume alcohol. G, it is illegal for anyone under the age of 18 to possess or use tobacco products. H, it is illegal to use illicit drugs or use prescribed drugs belonging to others. I, the law in Nebraska for abortion requires a minor under the age of 18 to obtain parental consent from a biological parent or legal guardian. Minors who wish to have a physician perform an abortion without a written consent from a parent or legal guardian, may file a petition requesting a court order allowing abortion without the consent of your parent or guardian.
And those were all the changes, correct?
And those are all the changes at 10th grade. Thank you, that is correct.
You know, I would like to just say one thing. I know we've had lots of public comment, and comments about what's in the standards, and sometimes the comments about maybe what people think are in the standards, or they've read maybe in someone else's standards, but not ours, haven't always been accurate to what our standards are. So, I guess this is a great opportunity, just to make sure that people recognize that these standards were created by this board. There are probably no other standards in the nation that look quite like ours, because we've given lots of input, and we've got specific to Nebraska state law, and we also have specific to our Code of Conduct. But I just want to emphasize that sometimes, some of the things even I heard tonight are definitely not.
That's correct.
Including anal sex and all kinds of other things. So, those are not, and I said it on public TV, but I just want to make sure everyone knows that some of those things that have been said are not included in our standards. So, I just want to, I want to encourage folks to really look at what our standards say, which are truly this board, and what we recognize is important for our students in our buildings. And I think, I personally have been very moved, I've got three children, one is completed OPS, one is in his senior year, one is an eighth grader. But the opportunities I've had to interact with my children, my children's friends, and including having spent an hour in a nurse's office at one of our high schools, just kind of as a fly on the wall, because I was there trying to get some other things signed, and some medication dropped off and things. What I saw, and what I experienced, is not necessarily my house, but I recognize that the children in our district are very, very different, and what they're exposed to, and the challenges that they're faced with are so different. And so, for me, these are standards that are very specific to our student population, and may not fit into any other school district around us, because it may not be the student population around us. But knowing our students, these are things that we need to be ensuring that we're thoughtful in presenting to them, and they're fully aware of this information, because they can get it off of social media. So, I guess, I just wanted to share that with the public. So, if you've been listening, make sure you go to the actual standards document, and not make an assumption that what you may have heard in public comment is in our standards. Mrs. Fay?
I'm moved to approve the 10th grade human growth and development standards with the, we don't have any changes here tonight, as presented.
So, there's-
Oh, we did, I'm sorry, we did. As amended in Dr. Kerberg's comments.
So, there's a motion on the floor to approve the 10th grade standards as amended from a previous discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Mrs. Underwood. So, now is there a discussion related to the 10th grade standards? Mrs. Fay?
I don't have any suggestions, deletions, additions. We'll work on the consent thing. But I do want to just say a few things. First of all, I want to thank Luann for explaining earlier tonight the difference between curriculum and standards. I know that that's something that people mix up the two, use the words interchangeably. I know when I was in college getting my degree in education, it was described to me that the standards are the fruit on the tree, what you're trying to reach, and the branches, how you get to those standards are the curriculum. So, if that helps anybody, it was helpful for me back in the day, and so that's, that's kind of how I look at that. So, thank you, Luann, for explaining that. And I think you, it's been mentioned here several times, the importance of making that curriculum, once we get to that point, available for the public to view. I've told people who've emailed me today, all of you know who you are, because I respond to every email myself, not a robot, as someone accused me, it's me. We've made the curriculum available right here, usually for a couple of weeks. It sits in this boardroom, and you can come and view it. Curriculum that's online will be made available online, I'm sure. And I want to emphasize once again to the staff, you've heard me say it, and to the board at multiple meetings, the importance of adopting a curriculum that's already had some field testing in some other districts, and has got that solid research and evidence behind it, as opposed to writing our own curriculum. We can talk about that more when we get to that point, but I just wanted to bring that up once again. To a couple of points that were made by fellow board members. The fact that we all laugh, because it's funny, and because it's kind of awkward when someone says anal sex, or when Mrs. Williams talks about having these conversations with her daughter, and her daughter asks why some of these porn-like things can be said, that's just further evidence that we need to be having this conversation in our schools with our kids. Because these are academic subject areas related to their health, and physical and psychological well-being. And they're things that we ought to be able to talk about in a, it's, I know it's hard, because bodies are funny, that's why you laugh when your uncle says, pull my finger, right? I mean, it's funny. Bodies are funny, they do funny things. But we need to be able to have these conversations, and talk about them in a way that raises the level up, so that maybe your daughter's daughter won't think about these things as porn-like, right? And, and I think, you know, Mrs. Godding, you said something about this being specifically for the needs of OPS students. I think this is information that needs to be taught to all students. My kids are probably, you know, I don't know how they are compared to your kids, their upbringing, I have no idea, you know, how you want to break it down, socio-economically, based on race, what part of the city you live in, I don't know. But I think that these are things that we need to teach to all kids. By virtue of the fact that we're all here, people are having sex, and they're all races, and income levels, and backgrounds, and it's, you know, so I, and they're also engaging in other kinds of things we're talking about here, whiskey behaviors, and bullying, and the whole social media, all of it, they're all doing it, all of them, everybody, we're all doing it. So, let's not think about this just as information that's needed for one specific type of kid, from one specific background, socioeconomic area, level, whatever. In response to some of the emails I had about this being rushed, I remember very clearly, when none of you were here, except Justin, sitting down with Dr. Spencer May in her office, and talking about this, at least four years ago, I would say. And so, I really want to commend all the people that were brave enough to do this. And that starts with the staff, because I know it was hard, and it continues to be hard, and it's, and maybe hard's not the right word. It presents certain challenges. But you have all really risen to meet those challenges, and brought a great document to us, and I just want to thank you, especially you, Karen. I know this was hard, so thank you. But I really want to thank this board, because you were brave enough to take it on, and that, you just deserve a lot of credit for that. You have, I'm sure, gotten the emails that I've gotten, the letters to your home, the phone calls on your voicemail, and people stopping you in the grocery store. And so, but you did it, and you took it on, and I just really applaud you for that. And I want to thank the community that has showed up, week after week, and shared your opinion. And, and there's going to be people who are unhappy, no matter how this turns out, this last vote, the two we've already taken. But I really thank you for getting engaged in the Omaha Public Schools, and in your community's largest school district, and in public education in general. So, don't let this be the end of your engagement. We talk about so many things that affect your kids, or your grandkids, or your neighbor's kids, every single day. So, stay engaged and stay involved. And I also want to thank the community that told us that they would have our backs, if we were brave enough to take this on. And so, we've had those people come and be our, those who verified that there was support in the community for this with factual, medically accurate information, whether it's UNMC, or UNO, or the Douglas County Health Department, or the Omaha Women's Fund. I mean, there's just been, just a great outpouring of people who have come and presented very factual academic information from a very calm, unemotional perspective, and said, it's going to be okay if you do this, and here's why. So, I just want to thank you. I think that's it. So, I know that's long, but this is really important to me, and I'm just, I'm just really proud to be serving with this board. So, I just, I just thank you all for all the work that you put into this, and that's it.
Ms. Williams?
So, last week at our workshop, I was very specific and very strong, and I asked you all to bring back something with revisions that you, that you believed in. And so, this is the moment of truth. And so, my question, I have something else to say, but my question to you is, did you, are you comfortable, are you happy, did you bring something back that is best for 52,000 students?
Absolutely, yes.
Consensus across the staff?
Yes.
So, thank you, Mrs. Fay, for your words. You know, this is, this, we've said it time and time again, this is a very tough conversation either way this goes. I just want to put it out there, that for me personally, I've heard, from me, it's political, and it's personal agenda, and I have no agenda but what's best for 52,000 students. And whether or not I'm re-elected next term, that doesn't make a difference for me. This is what's best for 52,000 students, and I'm going to always stand on what's best for them. And some of this goes against my own beliefs. But sometimes we have to take a step out, and look at what's best for all. I believe that you've brought back to us a recommendation that is more factual and to the point of what we need to be looking at from the standards perspective. And so, I eagerly await what the curriculum conversation looks like. And as long as this has taken us to get to standards, get some rest, because the curriculum part, you're going to be very tired, and so are we. But I just wanted to say that, you know, we're never going to make a decision that everyone 100% across the table is going to be happy with. And I find solace, that when I go to sleep tonight, whatever I decide was based on what's best for students, and that's what it should be in this role. It's not partisan, it's not any of the things that I've personally been accused of. I bring up my child because this has affected her at school, outside of, it's hard to not know, you know, she, for the most part, everybody knows that I'm her mom. And where I have challenge with this issue, is that we're making an issue based on what's best for students, an adult issue. And a lot of the things that we talked about, you know, I'm going to speak for my child right now, is that I will not tolerate her being bullied behind this issue, because of what I decide to do. And I can't say that some of our children, and I don't know, but I've heard rumblings, but this is the part, that if we're going to make decisions what's best for kids, you don't get to bully other people's children, or you don't attack them personally, because this isn't, this is a decision that we make. I'll, I'll take it, because I'm a big girl. I got into this, I got, I ran for this seat, because this was something that God put on my heart, and I've heard both, you know, we've- you know, we've had a lot of preaching here and a lot of scripture, but this was, I'm here because that was something that was placed on my heart, to stand up and be the voice. And overwhelmingly, I've got the same emails and the same phone calls and the same stop me at every step, at work, at the grocery store, at home, at the doctor's office, everywhere. I've gotten that too. But I make a decision based on what's best for our kids. And again, I will stand by that. And whatever the future on that end of the perspective is for me, again, I will sit good at night because I've made the decision what's best for many students. And I will always, every decision I make is based on that very same thing. So I just want to thank you as well, because I know you all have been under fire, the superintendent, a lot of our staff. It's been the most controversial issue that we've discussed. It's a hard decision for some of us to make because we have to look internally, but I think it's a decision that's going to be best for students, not just our students now, but for generations to come. And if that's not what we came here to do, then we shouldn't be here. And so I just wanted to put it out there publicly, my thoughts, my feelings, how it's affected my family life, how it's affected my work life. And I applaud all of us at this table and our staff, because we have been under fire, the media, the social media, the personal, all of those things. But as long as we all together can go to sleep at night and say that we did the best thing, what's best for students, then that's all I need to be here in this seat and to finish out 2016. So thank you very much.
Mr. Vargas.
Thank you very much, President Scotting. I'll try to keep it short, I mean, I echo a lot of the sentiments that people said. Something different I want to make sure to call out. The first is that, you know, this is kudos to the staff, I think one of the things that I appreciate the most is regardless of where we come from, our beliefs, that we really try to maintain, try our best to be as pragmatic as possible when we're approaching this. What are other school districts doing when we're looking at, you know, what is best for kids? And let's study up, let's make sure we're being both in line with what standards look like and then also being ourselves. And I could say that when we compared ourselves to the curriculum and other districts that are similar to ours across the Midwest, we didn't just say, "Well, they're doing it so we have to do it." There are some places where we are doing things at the same grade level and/or sometimes earlier, and then sometimes we're doing it later. And I think that shows that the way that we approached this wasn't cookie cutter and it wasn't just, "Let's just adopt it because..." Let's make sure we are taking an informed opinion on where all of our constituents stand as much as possible and also taking into account what we're seeing as pragmatic and as objective versus other districts. The other thing I want to make sure to call out, and this has been called out, but it is important to me, this engagement that we've had from the community is amazing. And I want to make sure that the engagement doesn't stop in a way that doesn't continue on with why we originally engaged. People are engaged because they care about what happens and what is... How their families are impacted. There are tremendous number of decisions that we've taken on during this year that impact students in many other ways that we haven't had this, and I'll say it, we haven't had this engagement. And I think that, thinking proactively, I want to make sure the community, like, we respect everybody's opinions and hopefully this does not curtail you from continuing to come back and giving your perspectives, opinions, and beginning, keeping, shaping our policies on how they impact our everyday lives. You know, I echo the sentiments to the rest of the board, this is something that we've been doing for some time and is not easy, and to the staff and Superintendent Evans and President Scotting and Vice Chair Yolanda Williams. Ultimately, as a board member, we are trying to do our due diligence as much as possible, make sure we are grounded in objective data and are being data-driven, and we are creating a safe and welcoming environment for all of our kids, no matter their identities, what makes them unique, and I think that's what we're doing. And so that's... I just wanted to make sure to say that as a frame for how I vote and where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Ms. America.
Thank you, President Scotting. First, I want to echo what Mr. Vargas said, I really hope this level of engagement continues and that we have this many people when we're talking about math standards and science standards and reading standards, because this is our children's future. All of these subjects are important and we need to be sure we're teaching factual, correct information in every subject area. I wrote like six pages of stuff and I'm not going to make you all sit through that, so I'm going to touch on highlights. Just based on feedback that I heard during public comment, emails I've received, people who have stopped me at work, at church, in the grocery store, pretty much everywhere that I've gone, we, as a school district, as a school board, we have a responsibility to teach our students about the world around them. We've talked a lot about making sure they understand what consent is, how to effectively use social media, what a healthy relationship and healthy communication looks like, and that it's okay to say no, and what they should do when someone's pressuring them to do something they don't want to do. Specifically, our LGBTQIA students need to know that they're a loved, welcome part of this society. When, I think the Ross study I read was about 50% of these students attempt suicide. If we're not telling them that they are welcome in our school, that's irresponsible of us. I have friends who graduated from this district that killed themselves because they didn't feel welcome in this society. We need to be teaching that to our students, to value and welcome all human beings. I'm trying not to get emotional here either. I get very, very offended when I hear people imply and outright state that if we teach our students medically and factually correct information about sex and relationships, it's going to make them go out, have sex, get STIs and have abortions. I graduated from this district, I went through a comprehensive sex education curriculum. I believed in abstinence until marriage then, I still believe that and I'm still practicing that. But because that's my personal belief, doesn't mean that I can force everyone to conform to that view. Again, if families are worried about what their children are going to do with this information, you have options. You can opt out of the whole class, you can opt out of parts of the classes that you don't want your student to take. Or we can take that information and use it as an opportunity to engage your students, talk to them about what was covered in class, ask them their thoughts about it, share your family's beliefs, and have a deep heart-to-heart conversation with your students. I'm getting very passionate about this topic. I didn't think that was going to happen when we started back in May of 2014, because I went back and read the information from that first meeting. So I thank everyone for their patience and all the work and effort that has gone into bringing us to the point we're at now.
Okay, I think... Oh, sorry, Ms. Underwood.
Sorry, I'll make this short. I'm not normally long-winded anyway, but just another thank you to staff for all your hard work on this. One thing I wanted to mention, and we just briefly touched on it, I think, but, you know, one of the topics that are in our content standards, they include grit, hope and goals, and really that's what this is all about, right? Is giving our students the information necessary to make healthy life choices that support those life goals. And I would feel personally like we're doing a disservice to our students if we're not allowing the opportunity to receive comprehensive human growth and development information. And that's what I've been hearing, I still to this day hear a majority of support from the people that reach out to me for this, the updated content standards and curriculum. I had a baby in March and so, which brings a new kind of perspective into my life, and I have conversations with my husband about this kind of thing. And when Simon reaches the age where we need to start having these kind of conversations with him, I'm going to be thinking about it a little differently, I think, because of this. And, you know, what my husband and I talk about is, we want Simon to go through school surrounded by kids who have the opportunity to receive comprehensive information. And so that's where I'm approaching it from a parent. But like I said, I'm also just hearing overwhelming support for this too, and I also just feel like it's the right thing to do. So, thank you for what you guys have done.
All right, thank you so much. Again, thank you to all of those in the audience... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wayne.
And I'm not going to have a whole lot of comments and I'm not going to comment afterwards. This has been a long conversation, I know, Ms. Fay and I have had a lot of conversations and Mr. Vargas and Mr. Snow. I was originally going to vote no on everything. And the reason is, I think, process matters. I think staff has done a great job with putting the contents together, but I'm not going to get into, and I think Superintendent Evans knows how I feel about how we presented it, and I'm not going to get into all of that. But the only way I can object is to vote no. And so, I don't know how I'm going to vote in the next five to 10 seconds, but I think process matters. I think we've built a great job of credibility in doing things, and I think we took probably a hit here for unnecessary reasons. So that's just, I'll just leave it at that and I don't know where I'm at.
Well, I'll give you a couple extra seconds. I wanted also echo thanks to the audience for your participation and really, the emails and the phone calls did result in some changes from where we ended up. I think that happened through the workshop and so I think that that was very much appreciated and we got to a little bit of a different place. Thanks staff for, you know, the very hard work that they've done. And I would echo what Ms. Williams and Ms. America said as far as my own personal beliefs and understanding of what I want taught in my home, but I'm hoping that the information that we've included, which we're saying will be very transparent to parents with, creates conversation in many homes in this district, because just the conversation about emergency contraception has allowed there to be a whole new conversation at my house that had never happened before, and I think had this not come up, we may not have touched on our personal beliefs in our own homes. So I'm very thankful for everyone at this table who has adjusted as we've tried to accommodate the public comment and as we've worked through this process. So with that, thank you to everyone and I think we're ready for... Oh, Mr....
Mr. Scanlon wanted to talk.
Mr. Scanlon wanted to talk, no, okay. Mr. Evans wanted to say something, so I'll let Mr. Evans.
I will be definitely very quick. Thanks to everybody, thanks to staff, thanks to the board. As elected officials and staff of public school, our duty is to be thoughtful. I think we've been pretty thoughtful as a group. I think we've looked at this from every direction and so I'm thankful for everybody. I think a lot of energies went into it and I think that's our job, is to be thoughtful. And is it perfect and is there someone that will agree and someone that will disagree? Absolutely, always. That's what it is on a lot of issues. But were we thoughtful and did we analyze and did we look at the things we should have looked at and did we take input? We took a lot of input. And it's been challenging at times, for sure, for all of us, and we all know what those challenges have been. But I'm thankful for all of you, board members, staff alike, being very thoughtful, thankful for the public, for their interest, and I echo everybody's comments. I hope folks come back out for math conversations, science conversations, language arts conversations, because those are important too. And all the other programs and initiatives we've got and the strategic plan, that's important. What we're doing with the bond issue to improve all of our physical plans, that's important. What we're doing with the student assignment plan, all of these things that in most cases had not been looked at in decades, that now within a two-and-a-half-year timeframe, we're tackling. Big things, big things, and we've done it in a very thoughtful and analytical way. So thank you to everybody.
Okay, with that, we'll call Mr. Ray.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne?
No.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Scotting?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Eight aye, one no.
Motion carries. With that, we will move on to J-1C, Omaha Public Schools Legal Services. Mrs. Neela Spreche.
Mrs. Scotty.
Yes.
Because we still have a legislative update that's kind of really time-sensitive, I'm wondering if we can postpone the legal services.
Are you making a motion to postpone to the next meeting?
Yes, I move to postpone item J-1C to the next full board meeting, which I don't know the data.
All right. I can't find the date, I think.
February 1st, I believe.
That's what I'm thinking, so, okay. So, there's a motion on the floor to postpone the legal services, Omaha Public Schools Legal Services to February 1st. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Williams. Mr. Scanlon.
I guess I'd just like to hear from legal if that will have any implications, if we move it back, if there's anything that's time-critical in that topic.
So there's a motion on the floor, we're going to have discussion, and Mr. Scanlon has asked a question.
I do believe it would have implications. One of the provisions in the agreement is contracts, so anything that we send that's not currently included, so anything I would send in the next two weeks would not be covered under the retainer, and so we wouldn't be including those basic contracts. So it could have a potential financial impact. It wouldn't be a lot, but it would be a little bit.
Mrs. Fay.
But aren't we covered under our current agreement that we've been going month-to-month on? What would change in the next week and a half?
Those contract provisions are under a monthly hourly amount, they're not under the retainer.
Well, I understand that, but there's nothing, I mean, it's not like we're like elapsed, I mean, we would just continue on the way we've been for the next...
It would be an hourly amount, which could potentially be more than something that we would include under the retainer. So there would be additional fees that could cost the district, and that's up to you. It wouldn't be months.
So there's a... There would be a difference, probably not significant financial impact if we wait two weeks? Sorry. Oh, there we go.
Yep.
Yeah, somehow that got moved back. All right, any other questions, comments? Here.
So are we talking about moving J-1C to the next board meeting?
Right, February 1st, I think. February 1st.
I would be in favor of that. I've talked to some board members and I know how this showed up as an action item and, yeah, I understand you gave your piece why it's an action item, but I think if anything that's being presented to the board for renewing any contract or anything should be brought to the board as an information item to allow people to have input, so it does not come up and you're met with tons of questions and then we have to take it off as an action item and make it an information item.
I also do recall, I viewed the September 9th videotape of the previous discussion that I had in front of the Board of Education and Luann Gotten, President Scotting, excuse me, specifically states that I should bring it back as an action item, so. And as well as the fact that every contract that's in front of the district is routinely put under consent and we never bring contracts on a regular basis.
But this is a... This is a different contract. This is a contract that's always going to be...
So I think we did cover it as information, but it's been quite a while. And so now it's coming back as action, the motion on the floor is to postpone that action until next time, which gives plenty of opportunity in two weeks.
But I would rather have it come up as an information item so we can talk as a board. Would that make sense?
Well, right now the motion on the floor is for it to be postponed.
Fair enough.
For this action item to be postponed. Ms. Williams.
So I guess I am for that, I just want to make sure that as a board, we are all under the same consensus as far as if something comes up cost-wise, that it's an hourly, it's an increased rate, that we would all be okay with that for that week and a half duration. That I just wanted to at least ask the question.
Mrs. Fay.
Well, not having the opportunity, while I understand that the legal piece was brought up as an information item, we haven't seen this contract as an information item. And the, without being able to dive into it into any greater depth and do any kind of fiscal analysis, this retainer is twice as much as the one we're currently paying. So I think, you know, I don't know how the numbers shake out, I've got a hypothetical well, if we get some contracts in the next 10 days, it might cost more because it's hourly, and I've got an "I know" that the retainer's twice as much in this agreement as the one we're currently under.
And it's simply not true that it's any more money.
Just a minute, just a minute. So I'm having a discussion with the board. So I think that that's the piece that I'm...
I think we did have an email on... I think we had an email on... I think we did have an email on, I think we had an email on looking at last year's numbers, what the savings would be by the change in the retainer and what would have fallen under that. You never know going forward whether it would be the same thing or not, so I can't remember if it was an email or was it an email?
It was an email, and the agreement was attached, so you've had that agreement for over a week.
Okay, so with that, the, oh, Mr. Wayne?
The SRO agreement came as an information item and then came as an action item. And part of the reason was, is because it was a hot topic, not was, still is. We had a long conversation the previous year regarding SROs, and we had a committee that was kind of put in place to look at it or whatever, and so when the contract came up, it was an information item and then an action item. Legal issues as far as billing is a hot topic, and has always been a hot topic. In fact, it was mentioned multiple times on the legislation when talking about OPS expenditures. It was things that every one of us answered in campaigns. And so today, to sit here and throw a contract in front of the public and have an up or down vote without even engaging our public, when we talked about these issues, when it was talked on the floor multiple times, I mean, it's been on the agenda now. I don't care if it comes back as an action item and we'll deal with it then, but it's reported annually, our law expenditures by the World Herald's Front Page, every year. We just went through a year and a half of public conversation about human growth and development, but we're going to come an up or down vote with only it being out publicly for maybe three or four weeks on an issue that has been that big of an issue for the school district? I agree with postponing it, we'll deal with it then.
Ms. Williams?
So I just wanted to, again, my only question to this was, are we, I mean, I don't know if we will or not, but I just wanted to make sure if we, I'm fine postponing it myself, but I just wanted to make sure that we were all, if, had there been, if we would be okay with that. I don't, you know, I think we should have the presentation, but my only question was, are we all okay with postponing it if there are some extra costs for this? I don't foresee that, I mean, but I'm not the expert, but I just, to move the conversation along so we can get to legislative issues.
So I'm not hearing, oh, Ms. Underwood?
I'm sorry if I just didn't catch the rationale, but to Mrs. Fay's point, we're currently month-to-month, is that not so true?
So, and part of not being able to give a presentation, this makes it all difficult because I could explain all of this to all of you, but the way that our current letter of engagement works, we do not currently have agreement, typically, letters of engagement are what most, if anything's in writing with an entity, letters of engagement are typically what's done. We have changed that, we've put things into a contract, we have expanded the scope of services under the retainer. And so if we utilize those services to a greater level, then we save the district money because that's covered under a capped amount. So we're capping more things under that $22,000 amount, and so I'm putting more things into that bucket, so, which used to be an hourly amount.
Right, okay, yeah, so I understand that. So I guess your point is that the, for the next two weeks or three weeks or whatever it is until we actually have the board meeting on this, it just kicks back under to the hourly agreement?
It would be an hourly amount.
Which is, yeah, which is the way that it's been for the last year or whatever. Okay. I'm fine with that.
I got a question.
Okay. Mr. Wayne?
No, because, because process matters, and this is what I mean. Reviewing contracts is currently under our proposal, so there will be no additional trials for simple contracts. Is there a HR meeting in the next week and a half to two weeks? Six per year, so there might be one there. My point is, is that we've already been operating that way for two and a half years now, since President Gray, so roughly. Nothing's changing. We extended for two more weeks, and we have to have some serious conversations about this contract, so.
Okay, with that, roll call, please.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gadding?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Nine aye.
So motion carries, I'm going to restate what it was because I didn't say that ahead of time, I apologize. So the motion was to move the Omaha Public Schools Legal Services to the February 1st meeting, so it will be on the February 1st meeting. Mr. Scanlon?
I don't think it was stated in the motion, but is the intention to bring it back as an action item or an information item? Because I feel like we've had quite a bit of information presented to us on legal's recommendations.
But it was postponed, and it was under action, so there was nobody saying that it should be postponed. The motion wasn't to postpone it and move it to information, so it'll still come back as an action item.
Point of order, to your point, this is the first time that we're having negotiations outside of, for a major contract like this outside of closed session for the first time. That's a negotiation strategy, I think, is held in closed session.
No, I think the legal has presented in a presentation that we should go out for workman's comp, that there was a, another in-house legal counsel being hired, and then there were board members that said they wanted a contract with Baird Home, they didn't want the month-to-month agreement that we had. I guess if legal can touch on that, but that's my recollection that it was held publicly and...
I'll submit to that.
Okay, I think we're good then. All right, so with that, we're going to move on to J-1D Legislative Update. We have a number of things to cover, and they're very important, so is everybody good to be at the table, or do we need, does anybody want to make a motion for a five-minute recess? I think, Mr. Lindsey, is your presentation maybe half an hour? I just...
Fifteen to twenty.
Fifteen to 20 minutes before we get into voting on positions, so. Then the 1,000 policies, which we've seen quite a bit, so. All right, so we're good? We'll turn the floor over to you.
I noticed the, the room was full until Mrs. Gadding said that we're going to move me forward, so I still have the ability to clear a room. I was asked, Legislative Committee had a meeting, and Mrs. Fay, I'm not sure if you'll be going through the bill positions, you want me to do that, but we wanted to start with, because one of the big questions that's been ongoing for a while is the discussions among the superintendents with the, about the learning community. There's been several proposals last year and this year to make changes to those, and so those are the, that is going to be one of the significant issues that all of you will have to weigh in on. The, so with that, we've got a presentation, and I've used various parts of these slides, some of them you're very familiar with, others maybe not so much, but I want to take back a little bit the, go back to the history of the learning community, because I think at times there's some, maybe some revisionism that occurs when talking about what were the, what was the genesis of the, of the learning community. The slide that's up on the screen that you have in your materials is, the first one is a slide we actually used when, when the whole learning community issue first came up, and that's why you'll see on this slide, it's only Douglas County, because that's how it first started. If you'll recall back to the '05-'06 timeframe, there was an issue out there that was termed one city, one school district, and that was, besides a traumatic time, it was a, that was a culmination, I think, of a lot of issues that have been building within OPS, and the learning community was the result or was the solution that was proposed to resolve the one city, one school district issue, as well as some of the underlying issues that caused the then OPS Board to move forward with that proposal. So this was to illustrate that one of those problems, one of those significant problems, the blue on the map is levels of poverty. The red are levels of affluence, and the deeper the red, the more affluent, the deeper the blue, the less affluent, and that, that shows that the OPS boundaries have a huge amount of the poverty and a smaller amount of the affluence. If we move forward to, and this is a little bit clearer map, because technology, I think, has improved, this is people living below poverty in 2009. You see that nothing has really changed, except that the problems have become exacerbated between 2000 and 2009 data. Now, if we look and move this forward to today, 2015 data, you'll see, and I'm going to flip between these two so you can see the growth, just in the last six years in poverty within OPS, and the, the bulk of that poverty is within the Omaha Public School District. And so that is the trend that we're looking at, and the trend that, the trends that you as a board will have to deal with in the short term, and those trends are, I'm guessing, likely to continue. So if we move it down to a school level, we, excuse me, we look first to the median family income, that shows you some of the, on your screen shows you some of the dollars that are involved, and the discrepancy in what the income levels are, and is, I think as the research all indicates, poverty is an obstacle that people have to, or that teachers in classrooms have to work around, and I'm, as we'll talk about in a few minutes, Omaha Public Schools, I think, are exceptional at overcoming those obstacles and getting kids to learn. This is the 2009 map, again, if we move forward to 2014, those trends continue. Excuse me, again, flipping between them, you can see how those trends continue. So if we move it down into a school level and how it affects us and look at free and reduced lunch percentages, again, it's hard to see the, the district lines there, but almost all of the free and reduced lunch occurs in Bellevue, Rolston, and OPS, and that with very limited amounts in Millard, Millard Westside, and Pavilion La Vista. Doesn't exist or at the levels that we're looking at over the, some of the state average in those other districts. So that is the poverty, what we were looking at then and how those trends are still in place now. And that's, again, nothing, no new information to you, other than just seeing how it compares with various other districts. Second issue that was raised at that time as well was the percentage of people who are English-language learners. This is the percentage of people who speak English less than very well in Douglas and Sarpy County, and again, almost exclusively within OPS, with some in Rolston, Bellevue, and small tracts in some of the other districts. But again, a huge issue to OPS is our English-language learners. So if we put that into numbers, see up on the, on the chart, the growth, the growth since 2000, at from 3,400 to 17,030. To put that in perspective, if our English-language learners were a separate school district, they would be the fourth-largest school district in the state. That's just our English-language learners within Omaha Public Schools. If we take a segment of that, and that's a refugee population that has been increasing as well, and again, dramatic increases in the last five years, 110% increase, we have 2,083. Again, to put that in perspective, if that, if our refugee population was a separate school district, it would be the 23rd-largest district in the state, including larger than three of the 11 school, school districts in the learning community. So moving into how those are the obstacles that were in place then, not so much the refugee issue, but the EOL and poverty issues were in place at the time of the starting of the learning community. This, this slide is a little bit hard to read, but it, it shows the valuation per student, what our property tax resources are for the various school districts, and they range from 254,000 in Bellevue, which of course has off at Air Force Base, so it's, it gets some federal impact aid, although I believe that has been reduced dramatically, but it ranges from a low of OPS at 383,000 per student up to a high of 1.6 million per student. So the bottom line is that you have these discrepancies in how much a dollar of property tax will raise in, depending on which side of Harrison Street you live on. So putting that in, up on a map again to show the differences in the districts, this shows again what those various property values per student are. And this was one of the key issues the learning community was attempting to resolve, and that is the disparity or the, in access to resources. Combining those two maps of the resources per student, again, you can see, that, by the way, that last one was '09, this is 2015, I do want to point something out here. If you notice in 2009, OPS was at 408,941 dollars per student. In 2015, 383,774 dollars per student. So a drop of 25,000 dollars per student in valuation. Now, when you combine the fact that, that our enrollment has increased dramatically over those past five years, that's telling our evaluation simply is not keeping up, and some later numbers that we'll present will validate that. The, this is over, this map here is just overlaying the valuation per student over the poverty map. So you can see that the valuations where poverty exists are some of the lowest, some of the lowest in the, certainly in the learning community. And why is that important? The reason is the, in what the common levy was trying to address was how much, how much reliance there is on property tax, which is the most stable form of revenue, versus how much is reliant on TOS or State Aid. And looking at these, and I'd ask you to look at those second two columns, with the common levy using 2015-16 figures, OPS would be 50% reliance on TOS and 50% reliance on property tax. If the common levy were not in existence in the 15-16 fiscal year, 54% reliance on TOS and, and 46% reliance on property tax. And that is what the common levy is attempting to address, is to, to provide that stability, that same stability that some other districts have, that that's available as well to, to OPS and the other districts that are lower valuation per student. And we've got some other figures that we'll show you, that Connie will go over in a second, that, that show, illustrate that lack of stability a little bit, a little bit better to give you some history of TOS, a history of property tax. But, and I use these maps when I'm talking to senators, and the, part of the message is, the learning community is working, and if the learning community is working, we want to be careful when we change it to make sure any changes also work. When I say that, and these are not new slides to you at all, OPS math proficiency grades, or, excuse me, proficiency rates by grade at all levels increasing over the, over... or excuse me, proficiency rates by grade at all levels increasing over the, over the past five years. The trend lines are good. One of the things that the learning community was intended to address was the achievement gap. Over the past five years, OPS reducing the achievement gap in math proficiency rates. If we look at reading rates, again, OPS grades trending up. If we look at the achievement gap over the period of the times of the learning community, with some exceptions, but generally the trends are up. If we look at four-year graduation rate within OPS, the line there is the beginning of the learning community, graduation rates are up. If we look at the achievement gap, I don't have that slide. If we look at the four-year graduation rate by school, excuse me, again, trending up. And I think this is one of the critical slides, and that is looking at, at school districts of similar size, similar demographics within 700 miles of Omaha, looking at those similar urban school districts, OPS is number two in four-year graduation rates. Something is here, and it's not just the learning community. I would argue some of the other services besides common levy, the early childhood education that's been increasing, the elementary learning centers, plus a huge part of that is what OPS is doing internally as far as utilizing and maybe working with the learning community resources to improve student performance, student achievement. But the bottom line is what's happening is working, and OPS, OPS rates are among similarly situated communities doing very well. And so the, that is why I think, as Mr. Evans has been meeting with, and I'll allow him to talk about his discussions, but he's made clear that poverty funding, if the common levy were to go away, and that's what the proposals have been, that poverty funding has to increase, that there has to be something to replace what we're getting out of the stability, the trade-off for the stability of the property tax, the property tax levy that we're receiving out of the common levy. Ms. Fay, those are the, that's the background or what was trying to be accomplished by the learning community and where it stands now.
So thank you, Mr. Lindsay, for that brief, you did a great job of keeping it short because of one city, one school district and how we ended up with the learning community in 11 minutes is, that's pretty good. So I'm going to ask you on the legislative position statements document, if you can open that one and go to the last page, which is page 22. And while you're getting there, and Matt's pulling it up for the boardroom, the legislative committee met last Thursday and went through the bills that had been presented up to that time, and then, of course, bill introduction ended today, so I know that probably Mr. Lindsay has some more he's going to talk about, or maybe not.
No, not.
He doesn't, okay. And we took positions on bills that were relevant to OPS. And we also rewrote a couple of our statements, and so if you've gotten to page 22 on that legislative position statements, we rewrote the learning community position statement and the OSERS statement. And we're going to ask you all, after we have some discussion here, to maybe pass all of the recommendation, recommended positions on specific bills and on these statements that will help Mr. Evans and Mr. Lindsay as they work with the legislators on, as bills get shaped and amended and whatever out on the, out on the floor, that will help shape their conversations so that they can make the decisions they need to make. If there's anything you want to pull out and not have part of that motion, then that's fine, but rather than take each bill separately as a separate vote and each position separately as a separate vote, we're going to start by looking at all of them and trying, and wrapping them into one action item and then pulling out, but we'll pull out anything that somebody doesn't want in there. So if you've gotten to 22, you can see our new learning community position statement and I, I suppose I should read it. All right. "The learning community legislation was compromise legislation designed to resolve two then existing legal disputes, equitable funding for education and one city, one school district. The quid pro quo was straightforward. The legislature would provide for a common levy across the learning community in exchange for OPS giving up the statutory right, which Lincoln Public Schools still enjoys, to grow as the city grows. Ironically, now at a time when the learning community model is finally beginning to provide OPS the resources it was promised in 2009, OPS is being asked to support repeal of the common levy with promise of additional resources for the education of students in poverty and English language learners, despite the fact that the Nebraska Legislature has modified TOSA, modified the TOSA formula 21 of the last 24 years primarily for the purpose of limiting the growth of education spending. For these reasons, the Board of Education of the Omaha Public Schools opposes any effort to dismantle the learning community. We support the common levy because it provides both equitable distribution of property tax dollars and stability and predictability of funding. We oppose any structural change to the learning community that fails to address the disparity in valuation growth between OPS and the surrounding districts. We will continue to oppose any structural change to the learning community until such time as the Nebraska Legislature agrees to fully fund the resources necessary for the education of students in poverty and English language learners." So we took the statement from last year, I think we strengthened it in some areas. I'm going to have Mr. Lindsay or whoever come up and talk about the bills that relate to the learning community and how this statement shaped our support or opposition of them and maybe about that conversation happening with the governor and the legislators around the learning community and the common levy.
There have generally been, I mean, there have been discussions that have taken place among the various learning community, the 11 learning community superintendents. Those discussions, you voted on the superintendent's plan last January, I believe, pardon me?
December 2014.
Okay. You voted on that plan to support that plan. The question, at least that's the current policy under which we've been operating, and that is, I think there's some concerns about whether the current state of the superintendent's bill, or the bill that would seek to, to implement that, is that it lacks, a question of whether it has sufficient poverty dollars and it does not address ELL dollars, which were parts of what you voted on, when you voted on that superintendent's plan. That's the background. The bill that would, that would implement the superintendent's plan is LB 80, excuse me, 903. The legislative committee recommends a position and opposition, I believe for those reasons, and I invite committee member, board members who are on the committee if, if that didn't reflect the conversation. But a question of whether those, whether the ELL and poverty funding was sufficient to agree to have the common levy go away.
And that's on page 21, 903, just if you're looking for it.
Yeah, in the, in the matrix, it's, there is one bill, if you go back two pages before that, there's another bill, LB 739, which would simply repeal the common levy without providing anything other than a repeal of the common levy. The legislative committee recommends a position of opposition because it's violative of the existing policy, the board vote last year and the proposed policy. LB 904, going back to the, that other page, LB 904 would allow districts with $12,000 or $12,000 population to opt out of the learning district, which would apply to one or two districts, would allow them to opt out of the district, out of the learning community. That would have a pretty significant effect on, on proceeds from the common levy, and it would also be violative of, of the existing board policy on learning community. Those are the bills that are in now. I can tell you, and I, it was just introduced today, so I have not yet read it. Senator Sullivan introduced a bill on the learning community today. There was another bill introduced yesterday or Friday, so there will be, that will be brought into the legislative committee, a couple of more learning community bills that I think the policy would guide the committee on, on positions for those bills. And those are, Ms. Fay, the learning community bills.
So you've got recommended opposition to 903, 739, 904, and adoption of the policy statement, or the position statement, excuse me, regarding the learning community. And then with the idea that, as we did last year, adopting the position statement helps Mr. Lindsay and Mr. Evans be able to guide their conversations and with the legislature. Is there any questions about the learn, just those learning community pieces before we go on to TOSA?
And I would just add that the position statements are important because sometimes we don't meet in between when things are happening, and sometimes it gets very fluid from what we all know of what's happening on the floor. So I completely agree with you, but I just want to point out to other board members and to the public that it's really important that we allow them to be making decisions based on this position statement when we all can't meet. Mr. Evans? Oh, and then, and then Ms. Wang.
And the previous position the board had taken in December 2014 is what allowed us to, actually, we made progress. I'm not sure we got where we wanted to go, but we really made a lot of progress, but the board's direction helped us make this. So your positioning on this will help us again push the direction you want us to go and move closer because there are some things in some of these bills that we've never seen before, where there's clear acceptance of the value of early childhood, there's clear acceptance of the value of the North and South Learning Centers, there's clear acceptance of the two-cent common levy, which is separate from the 95-cent levy, and this is the first time we've had that. Am I right, Mr. Lindsay?
Yeah, there's, there may be one bill that addresses any of those, but yeah, I think the general, the overall consensus, I think, is early learning centers and, and early childhood education especially have significant value.
Yeah, so it's nice to hear that from.
What we're not seeing is the ELL and the poverty aid.
Yep.
So I, actually, we have a learning community meeting tomorrow, so this is a great conversation to have so that I can have this conversation tomorrow. And I, I've been on the learning community now for a year. And it's, it's to me quite shocking at times, the disconnect, I think, of poverty and how important it is to us. And so I appreciate this statement and, and being able to, once we get through this tonight, being able to take this and bring this to the learning community tomorrow and voice this and support us of our position. And there's so many factors in the learning community, but the, the most important piece that I advocate tremendously for is the ELL and the poverty piece. And we just need to continue to focus on that. So I just wanted to thank the legislative committee for this position and crafting it. And once we get past adopting it or not, I'm always going to throw the opposite out. But I think it will also help bring some great conversation from the OPS perspective to the learning community as well. So I wanted to just thank you all for that.
So if everyone's okay, we're, oh, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Kenokee?
Oh. I just wanted to put it kind of in perspective for you so you, you can kind of put numbers to what would happen. And currently, in the 2015, '16 state aid certification, we're 50% funded by property tax and 50% funded by state aid. So I run the numbers where if we were just completely reliant on our own property valuation and the state aid we would garner from what our needs are, it goes from 50% to 46% in property taxes and 54% in state aid. So if you look at our budget for this year, for the general fund, say it's $600 million that we have budgeted for our, our general fund. So if we're relying on state aid, the, the property revenue that we lost would be equal to $24 million just this year because 1% of the 600 billion would be 6 million and then 4% then would be the 24 million. So it's a big deal for us, and especially because of the increasing population that we have in ELL and in poverty. And then the predictability is a big issue because if you could have a swing from one year to the next on what the state is able to provide for state aid, we would then have to adjust our budgets significantly to cover the expenditures that we have. So the predictability is very important, and in the current climate, that formula seems to change pretty regularly. And, you know, with changes in, in governor, they, they have different priorities and, and different visions for where the state's going. So this is really a, a pretty big deal for the district.
And thank you for bringing up the stability point because that has been another benefit of the common levy, has been the stability piece. So if everyone's okay, going on to, let's, let's go back to page 22 and look at, I think the TOSA statement did not change at all. I think it's the exact same statement that we adopted last year. "The Board of Education of the Omaha Public Schools hereby reaffirms its support for the following key principles regarding the Tax Equity and Educational Opportunity Support Act (TOSA). The Board supports the efforts of the legislature through TOSA to equalize resources to ensure educational opportunity for all students across the state. Within the formula, the Board especially supports additional funding for children in poverty and for English language learners, additional waiting for focus schools, funding for transportation, and the averaging adjustment. The Board opposes changes to TOSA that are disequalizing. The Board wishes to emphasize that one of the initial objectives of TOSA was to provide a stable, predictable system by which school districts could reasonably project," that's what Connie was just talking about, "plan and budget for their annual state aid allocation. As such, the Board opposes annual modifications to TOSA that are designed to minimize increases or even reduce the level of state funding. The Board supports continued strong funding for special education. The Board supports consideration by the legislature of a mechanism to provide for equalization of facility renovation and construction among school districts." And then now we'll ask Mr. Lindsay to go over the TOSA bill.
Ms. Fay, if it's okay, I'll include others that deal with funding.
Yes.
That are not necessarily TOSA, directly TOSA. But starting with LB 781, the legislative committee took a position in opposition. What that bill would do is require every public school district to, to every three years, prepare a plan for, to absorb students if all non-public schools closed, what the district's plan would be for absorbing those, and then would require that they do one of three things. Either add physical capacity to absorb all those students, number two, put in reserves at least 75% of the anticipated costs of reserving those students, or the third option, contracting with each of those non-public schools to, basically to pay 10% of what that cost of absorption would be. So it would incur an expense, it's a, it's a way to, to fund non-public schools using public school district resources. So the committee took a position in opposition. LB 826, the position, the committee took a position in support. Right now, special education funding is a, an appropriated amount, and that is distributed on a proportionate basis among students in special ed, among districts having kids in special ed. This would require the state to reimburse each school district at least 80% of the, of the excess cost. So it would increase special ed funding, and the committee recommends a position in support. LB 882 would place limits on school budget growth and would back off of the ability of this board, of the local boards, to, to exceed the, the budget lids by up to 1%. of this board, of the local boards, to exceed the budget lids by up to 1%. This would put a, require you to take a lower position and not give you that flexibility that led us to hit the 1%. The legislative committee recommends a position in opposition. LB 883 would create a component of TOSA, which would be foundation aid, which is a per capita or per student dollar amount, ratchets it up over a five-year period with a hold harmless provision that ratchets down over that same five-year period. Bottom line is OPS actually believe would receive about $23 million additional a year. The problem with it is, the bill requires that all dollars received pursuant to the foundation aid directly result, result directly in a reduction of the levy limit, or the levy imposed by the district, meaning we'd have to come up with $23 million a year to replace what we are required by statute to reduce in property taxes. Legislative committee took a position in opposition, or recommends a position in opposition. And LR 380 CA, constitutional amendment, which would change the allocation of lottery proceeds. Right now, 44.5% goes to education. This would increase that percentage to 65% of lottery proceeds going to education, decreasing the shares that go to the other entities or other interests, and the legislative committee recommends a position in support. LR 394 CA, again, would place a constitutional amendment on the ballot, would allow a political subdivision to opt out of TIF, of pledging their portion of the property tax to go to TIF projects. The, so it would put it back into the control of the school district, whether you would want to give up for a particular TIF project, give up your, your property tax revenue. And the committee recommends a position in support of that.
So you have 781, which is to absorb the private school students, that was opposed. 826, which was the special education funding, that was support. 882, which was putting limits on growth dollars for the district, that was opposed. 883, which was foundation aid, was opposed. LR 380 constitutional amendment on lottery dollars increasing for education, that was support. And LR 394 CA, as far as TIF, which we would love to have see that actually happen, is support. So along with the TOSA position statement, so are there any questions about funding TOSA bills or the position statement, which is, again, the same one we adopted last year? All right. So if you go back to page 22, we have the OSERS position statement, which is, the Board of Education of the Omaha Public Schools hereby reaffirms its commitment to ensuring the long-term stability of the Omaha School Employees Retirement System, OSERS. We support the efforts of the Nebraska Legislature to harmonize OSERS with the Nebraska School Employees Retirement System. And we welcome the proposed changes in Amendment 1815 to LB 447. Maybe Mr. Lindsay will refresh your memory on what those are in a second. Which provide the Nebraska Investment Council with exclusive authority to manage the investment and reinvestment of OSERS trust funds. The Board of Education opposes transfer of responsibility for oversight and management of the administrative functions of the retirement system to the trustees as proposed in Amendment 1815, without the condition that the trustees be prohibited from initiating litigation against the Omaha Public Schools. The Board of Education also opposes Amendment 1815, so long as it contains a provision requiring the immediate application of the proposed definition of solvency, which has the likely effect of imposing additional contribution requirements on the Omaha Public Schools based on the actuarially required contribution. Actuarially, I think I said that right. So, do you want to go over, just briefly remind them LB 447 and 448, and then what the amendment does?
447 was a bill that, 447, 448 addressed the same issue, and that was the alignment of, of OSERS with Npers, with the state plan, aligning various aspects of that. Plus, one of the bills would bring forward some changes that OPS was seeking, including the state investment officers' involvement in the investment of, of OSERS assets. The OSERS trustees was the other bill, where they were seeking changes in governance, as well as other changes. Those two bills were combined, combines maybe a little, there were negotiations that resulted in 447 as it, as it currently stands. The board, I believe, took a position on that, on that bill last, last spring. It carried over. It moved up to, the bill moved, was on the floor, ran into some difficulties, was bracketed on the request of the sponsor at that time. And those issues, at least the issues, most of the issues were, senators who were objecting to it, were okay with, with the bill. There've been some proposed changes in AM 1815. The, what's most significant are the changes that were not included in that, and those are the two changes referenced in this position statement. And that is the, the concern about OPS getting an immediate large ARC or additional required contribution that would have to be paid into the OSERS plan immediately, rather than any phase-in period. And number two is the request to-
Liability.
To have the, not allowing the OSERS trustees or the OSERS system to sue, to sue the school board, the concern being, the question of immediate, again, requesting immediate funding of any unfunded actuarial liability, which could be significantly expensive to the, to OPS. So AM 15, and when it says, just for your benefit, AM means an amendment. It's an amendment that has been proposed to LB 447. The amendment will have a hearing next week. And that's, that's the retirement committee, Senator Mello is introducing the amendment. But those involved want to make sure the public has an opportunity to comment on the amendment. But that's, those were the concerns with the amendment, the requests that, for inclusion in the amendment by OPS were not accepted. And this, this position statement reflects where the legislative committee is on, on those issues.
And 447 and 448 are on page 11 in your matrix. So are there any, we've talked about OSERS here at the board table before, are there any questions about that? So I think there's a couple of other bills.
There's one other bill, and that is LB 874. That bill changes the method of filling vacancies on school boards. Right now, if, if you're appointed to fill a vacancy, you serve, if it's prior to, I think, July 1, you, you serve until the next, the next general election, and you have to run again if you're not halfway through the term. If you are, what this would do is say, if there's a vacancy, you serve, you fill the unexpired term, and would not have to run at that midterm election to get the right to serve the additional two years that would be remaining. I believe it was brought by the Nebraska Association of School Boards.
And that was support.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, the recommendation is to support it.
So what we're asking you to do, and I'll make a motion here in a moment, is to support the positions that the committee took, as they're in the matrix, and the position statements. So I'll make the motion, but if someone wants to pull something out, you want them to do that after I make the motion?
I'm thinking through that, too. Why don't you go ahead and make the motion, and then we'll see if there's a second?
So for the committee, I move to, I recommend the positions taken in the, the legislative position statements taken in the, as presented to the board tonight, including support and opposition of the specific bills as just outlined, and the position statements themselves.
Second. So there's a motion on the floor to accept, or to take the recommendation from the legislative committee on the positions, as well as the legislative positions as listed in the matrix by Mrs. Fay, and there's a second by Ms. Williams. Is there any discussion or any items that anyone wants to pull out? Mr. Wayne?
Either Ms. Williams or Chairman Chan, I saw sitting out there. My understanding, tonight, the learning community legislative committee is supporting 903, which we're opposing. So if that goes to a vote tomorrow, I guess, Ms. Williams, I would like an update or something to the legislative committee, because I think we should probably meet and talk about that. If they're not going to support themselves, I think we need to have a, maybe a stronger position statement.
Okay. So if Ms. Williams can get back to us after tomorrow night's learning community meeting, that would be good. Any other comments or questions from anyone? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Merrick.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne. Aye, aye.
Okay, with that, a motion carries, and then we've got item J1E 1,000 Policy Series. We have documents in front of us, so Mr. Ray, can you please share with us, are these, thank you very much, we know you're doing a lot of traveling to Lincoln right now. Can you please share with us what the changes were from, so we all received these prior to the holiday break, there was opportunity for everybody to give input on that. Some changes were made at that time, I think, and then we've had just a few little changes made since then. So all changes that were asked, or all questions were asked, are they highlighted in red, or?
So on the cover sheet that I put on your desk prior to the meeting, highlights in yellow the changes that were made to each policy, and then I provided a hard copy as well of the changes. So you only have the hard copy of the ones that we changed based on the recommendations that were provided between December 7th and our prior input session. So I can go through each one of those, if you-
And you also emailed those out, correct?
I also emailed those out.
So does anyone have a question specifically? Mr. Scanlon?
I'd like some clarification on policy number 1310, gifts to the school district. We're adding, including gifts made through fundraising websites. I just want to make sure that we're not saying that money collected by the PTO or PTA of certain schools, the Omaha Schools Foundation has, has say on how that money is spent, as opposed to money that's given by parents-
I can clarify-
To the individual schools.
So I can clarify that one, that was a question that I had, I think. Correct, Mr. Ray? So 1310 relates to gifts to school employees. So if you were to give your teacher, I don't know, a bouquet of flowers that was under $25, that would be completely acceptable. But a lot of teachers are using various teacher fundraising sites where they'll say, oh goodness, I need, I want more material for a science project, and it might be that it's going to cost $100, so they'll put that out there on that website, and then parents can go make donations to that, and it comes back, the teacher gets a notice that says, okay, your project's been funded, the teacher will get a package in the mail for that project, and then they use that in their classroom. And that's not necessarily a gift, and so I just wanted to make sure that our teachers were covered under this policy. So that was a question I had, that they weren't, it wasn't appearing as though this was a gift specifically to a teacher, but it's really used through a fundraising website to provide additional instructional material for the classroom.
Okay, and I guess, knowing that, I believe, the South Marching Band and maybe the dance team utilized some fundraising, does that fall under this policy? Because I believe it was the teacher that set it up, or the bandleader, I just want to make sure that we don't-
Under policy 1310, it says gifts to school employees, so it wasn't a, that one wasn't to school employees, it was for the students themselves, and so it didn't go, the money didn't go directly to a teacher, nor does it really with the projects that they put out there, but in a sense, I did, I just had wanted that clarification. And so, I mean, we can include it or not include it, but I wanted to make sure that teachers who were putting fundraising projects out there weren't being denied based on the restriction of the policy.
And I understand that, I guess I just want to make sure that we communicate this to the public, that it's not, I mean, you could read it and say, well, the Omaha Schools Foundation is now in charge of PTO money, PTA, and it could be misinterpreted, I don't want that. I want to make sure that we're communicating that, that those funds are not, do not fall under this, this policy, it's just the specific ones that you just mentioned, where a teacher would set up a fundraiser for a certain classroom supplies or something.
I mean-
Mr. Wayne?
I agree, Mr. Scanlon, when I read gifts to employees, if it's over $30, it has to go to the Omaha School Foundation. Right? Is that how you're reading that?
I guess I'm not sure exactly what a gift to an employee is. I mean, we give our teachers, you know, my, my kids, teachers, we give them gifts at the end of the year, or gifts at the end of the semester, that aren't over $30. I guess I'm just not clear, when you start, start reading it, you know, all direct donations to the school district, what exactly, become the property of the school district, what does that mean? I mean, if I, if I donate to my, my school's PTO, is that a direct donation to the school district? I guess that's where my confusion comes from.
Well, okay, I follow you now. PTO, PTAs are supposed to be separate from the school district. I was, I thought you were talking about gifts to school employees. I mean, if you wanted to give outstanding whatever at Central, I'm just using Central, if it's over $30, you're telling people it has to go to the school foundation, Omaha Schools Foundation.
You're right, because I was expecting it to say excluding, I misread that, gifts to, made through fundraising websites, because there's no way to get that to the Schools Foundation, because it's being run by a website?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, basketball teams, football teams-
Right.
-marching bands, all of them fundraise, and I was just thinking of Central, because Central has their own foundation. I'm a little concerned on why we're, why we're allowing, why we're saying, or even encouraging people to give donations to the school district. It's just, it's weird to me. Well, if you put it in a policy, then you're saying it's okay, so explicitly we're encouraging. But, I mean, because most people, general public, think that we're some kind of nonprofit, even though we're not, we're statutorily created. But they also think if I write a check to the principal for a specific teacher, it's going to go directly to that, like you would in a nonprofit world. If I donate where I want it to go, it has to go there legally. But that's not the same in the district, and so I would never want the district to be in a situation where they're arguing with donors about where something goes. I would say it needs to go through Omaha Schools Foundation, your local PTO, PTA, or a nonprofit in the community. I would, I just wouldn't want to get into the idea of people cutting checks to the school district for donations.
Well, I think, yeah, can we get, I think I need more clarification on that, because I don't want- I don't want, I mean, my intent was not for gifts through fundraising websites, there's no way that that can go to the Omaha Schools Foundation, because those are specific sites that, that you go out and you say, "I need this project for my classroom," and you, it may or may not ever get funded, you're just told at the end of the funding, "Hey, it got funded," and you can check on that. So do you have a comment on that, Mrs. Tanoke?
Yeah, I spoke with the Omaha Schools Foundation and also with the accounting office, and what they do with the fundraising websites is they usually take a percentage off of what's raised for administration or whatever they do. With Omaha Schools Foundation, they have a mechanism where they can do a fundraising-type thing, and I believe when the South Band first started for their fundraising for that field trip they wanted to go on, they were doing it through a funding website, and then they eventually moved it into the Omaha Schools Foundation, because all of the money they raised goes back for that purpose. So I think that's kind of what the difference is, and if they were, if a teacher was doing a fundraiser, for example, and it went to the teacher through this funding website, then if they're raising money for a field trip, you know, it should be running through someplace where it can be.
Right, I think what, what it's been to describe to me by most teachers is that they're doing a project that's out there already on that website, so as soon as it's funded, that package gets shipped directly to the teacher and the building, and they can immediately open it up and start pulling out all this different material. So I guess I'd want more clarification. I don't think the Schools Foundation can do that very same type of activity, where they say, "Oh, here's the science project you wanted to do, and we're mailing it to you now that it's been funded." So that's, I don't think it's happening with field trips and those types of things, but I know that it's become a very popular source for lots of teachers around the entire United States on ways to fund additional fund projects for their classrooms that are educational in nature. I see Mr. Vargas agrees. Are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
Yeah, it's just tricky, yeah, there's like sites like Donors Choose is a big ones, they have on the east and west coast. Pretty much, you know, same thing. It's donating to a specific project, but I think it gets tricky, because it could also be donating for resources. So like, let's say if you wanted to get like a projector, you know, who's to say that if you're not monitoring that, if it's not through some entity, that it's not given to a teacher versus given to the school on behalf of those students? And so I think that's sort of the mechanism where you want something that does ensure, and usually with Donors Choose, there is a setup where you're, you have to go through the school, like you have to include the school information. So there's a difference between using like sites that are like that versus like a Kickstarter or something else like that, so.
Correct, and I think the principal has to approve at the school in order for the project to happen, so, and that is very comparable to what I've heard, that the principal approves it, because the principal understands, okay, that's a good additional resource for the classroom, so, anyway. I'm a little fuzzy on, can we, can we get some clarification on that?
One thing, too, when you use Omaha Schools Foundation, the building would purchase the item, and then they get reimbursed from the foundation, so when it goes through a funding mechanism like that, they're not necessarily guaranteed that that's what it's used for, you know, so, and then with the foundation as well, there's a, the tax, you know, that they can, you know, for tax benefits when they make donations, that type of thing.
I think I'd like the Policy Committee to take a look at this and maybe get a little bit more information and make sure that we're not having a negative impact on our staff. Is that, or Mr. Wayne?
If we're going to keep the first paragraph in there, change the word donation to contribution. Donation to the school district implies a tax break, which is not there.
Okay, Mr. Ray. Are there, okay, Mr. Wayne?
I talked to Mr. Ray about this, because it actually happened. Policy ten ten, visiting schools. So there's individuals who goes up to the school once, twice, once every other month or once a month to have lunch with their kid, and their kid is in high school. The high school principal has announced that they can't have lunch. The problem I have with this is, it's not really clear on the guidelines for this, it says disruption, but that can be anything, but we're inviting all these community organizations in, mentoring and all these things about, come up to our school, be there for, you know, read to a kid, blah, blah, blah. But we're kind of telling parents that they can't do it, so I don't, there's not changes in here, or a lot of, I don't say any changes, but I'm just, I'm really concerned about the implementation and the vagueness of that. I don't want to discourage parents, particularly parents, from visiting their schools. So I'm just throwing that out there. I'm not saying it's a policy change, I don't know how to do it, I'm not on the Policy Committee, but I think there needs to be some clearer guidelines on how people can visit and what actually means disruption.
Ms. Williams?
I actually agree with that. Just being in schools enough, anybody can go visit a school, and so I think we should, honestly, that for me is something that maybe we need to have some more discussion and bring back out of Policy Committee and present it after some thoughtful conversation. So I would actually, maybe if we could talk offline a little bit, or shoot me an email about some of those concerns, so that we can talk about it at Policy Committee.
So I'm hearing a couple different questions on tonight. I'll go ahead and ask if there's a motion on these policies. If not, we can take some of these items back to the Policy Committee and work through them. Yeah, and there's a few in this series that I know we're continuing to work on. So I don't, I don't hear a motion, so we'll go ahead and let the Policy Committee work through a couple of these things, and then we will bring them back to the board when we're ready for a little bit more discussion. With that, I'm just going to mention one thing. Under receipt of reports is the principal pipeline, if everybody could take a look at that. The intention is to bring that as an information item within the next month or so, getting you the information ahead of time, and then it'll come as an information item. Ms. Williams?
I move that the Board of Education go on a closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Dr. Turnquist, David Kramer, and Legal Counsel, Real Estate.
Is there a second?
Sir.
Motion by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Wayne. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Williams.
Aye.
Nine aye.
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel, Personnel Negotiations, Real Estate Litigation and Legal Advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at eleven thirty-one P M.[1787.47][1787.47]